Good evening, I'm happy to welcome my fellow board members and call the March 12th, 2019 School Board Meeting to order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Yes, Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mrs. McDougall.
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
Present.
Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or family members of the community. We'll start with Mrs. Campbell.
Give me a second. I'm working on it. Oh, wrong person. Wrong paper. Well, it's been a busy last few weeks for the fine arts, and so I just wanted to recognize our fine arts teachers and our schools who hosted the MPA contest. For those of you who are not in the music world, MPA is like the district track meet, like the regional science fair for the fine arts. And so two weeks ago, the chorus NPAs were held at Titusville High School. Last week, the band NPAs were held at Oak Alley, and then the orchestra ones were going on this week at Heritage and I believe at Titusville. And so our students are getting to show off their stuff and teamwork that they do so well each day. And so congratulations to all those students. Like I said, some of them are actually still going on. I think the last group's going tonight down at Heritage. So another thing that happened in the today that's going on is our South Area Art and Science Fair, and the awards will be presented tomorrow night. But I got a chance to go around, and I'm telling you what, even down to the kindergartners, our students are amazing artists. And so just to get to walk around, and then the science fair is going at the same time in the next room, and so to see all the wonderful projects that our elementary school students are able to do. And so Mr. Pitchard, Barry Pitchard, who is the principal at Sunrise Elementary, has been a part of that science fair for 33 years. He has been the chairman for, I believe he said, 18 years, and he's retiring, so they said congratulations to him today. But he wanted me to share with everyone that tomorrow from 3:30, no, from 3 until 6:30, it's going to be an open house at Melbourne Auditorium. So if you get a chance tomorrow to go down to Melbourne Auditorium, you can walk around and see all the amazing art and all the amazing science fair projects that are going on. So please stop by and see those. And then I had one more, but I can't find my paper. Hang on.
Welcome back to you, Ms. Campbell.
Yeah.
Will that work? Mr. Susan?
So I just wanted to say thank you to the Eastern Florida State College students that are here today. Thanks for having that work session with us earlier and bringing up those good ideas about what we can change in Brevard Public Schools to help you guys stay here as teachers and some of those easy things. I think that we could probably try to start putting into policy. The other thing is, is I want to say thank you to all the teachers that are here tonight. I think that you guys... No, 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 don't do that. 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 The thing is, is that we appreciate you guys showing your opinions and coming and standing for what you believe in. And I think a lot of the school board members also agree with your sentiment. We do need to pay teachers more. It's just how we're going to do that. So thank you for that. I wanted to also... Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. The next thing is, I wanted to say thank you to Brevard Achievement Center for having us for a meeting the other day. They had a workshop that was over there, and if you guys, a lot of you know who Brevard Achievement Center are because a lot of the people that they employ are kids that you have taught. But to go by the facility and actually see it, I spend time there. Sometimes I go to have some lunches there and stuff like that just to be with the kids. But I will tell you that there's a serious problem inside of our community. And what it is, is that we have a lot of students that have very heavy IEPs that are on the spectrum, that after they leave our schools, they're forgotten. And they end up in a situation... They end up in a situation where they're forgotten. Brevard Achievement Center creates that gap, and those kids aren't forgotten. And the other issue is, is that we have, is that a lot of our major manufacturers here in this county aren't hiring the way that they should be. So Brevard Achievement Center, there's a set aside for a lot of our Brevard Achievement Center kids that should go to work in these government contracts, but they're not. So if you ever see any of them, get an opportunity for those kids to sign up and to be a part of those, please do. The next thing I wanted to do is say thank you to Endeavor. I joined the team finally. I was set aside because I had the birth of my daughter sent me back, but I did end up going to Endeavor, and I did end up being a part of it. And I will tell you, as a teacher that you guys have, as a former teacher, being back inside the classroom is the most rewarding thing in the entire world. I loved being in there with the kids, and I wanted to say thank you, Ms. Duskovich, for putting that together. It's an amazing thing about getting us tapped in there, and that was an amazing thing to be a part of. And, and I have a lot of stuff, but I'm just gonna leave it on this one. My... There's specific individuals that do a lot, and they work really hard, and they do some spectacular things. But two and a half years ago, we decided that we were going to try to do something known as the Innovation Games. And we were going to lead this state of Florida in STEM competitions. And now arguably last Friday, with drone racing underwater, drone sea perch, with, you know, business pitches, and at the Solar Energy Center, along with, we had the Mars Rover groups inside there, Boeing, Northrop Grumman, Harris, NASA, all of the organizations are finally starting to come on to be a part of this, and we can set our mark as far as leading the state of Florida in STEM activities and doing what we do inside the classroom. But there's an individual that needs to get a lot of credit for doing that. You know, putting that whole thing together goes on a staff that doesn't have any more resources than they did prior to the Innovation Games. And to coordinate 500 kids, along with 100 adults, along with 25 companies and everything else, that's a big deal to do. And Shereen Lucton gets all the credit in the world from the Equity and Choice and Innovation Department does also, but it has been her baby. And I will say that without having a hitch about coordinating everything, bringing all the partners together, and doing what those kids absolutely loved, and doing for the first time anywhere in the state of Florida that they are doing drone races, underwater sea perch, all of that in one place. It's the only place that we've ever done it, is here. And that all falls on the shoulders of Shereen Lucton and Ms. Archer's organization for doing what they did and the dreams that we have. So I could go on all night, but those are my points that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan.
I remembered my other thing, and that is an opportunity I wanted to share from Cindy Johnson, and that is that for the second summer in a long time, we're going to have the summer fine arts, excuse me, the summer music theater workshop again. And the reason why I want to say it tonight is because the window of registering is open right now. And so if you'll go, you can, I'm beginning to be sharing, actually, I think it just went on my Facebook page here in just a few minutes. You can find that link somewhere on the Brevard webpage through your fine arts teachers. It's free because it's done from a grant provided to us. Transportation is free through the grant. This year, the North End is going to be producing Mary Poppins, and the South End's going to be producing Fiddler on the Roof. And I'm really excited to see those productions this summer. So sign up today. It runs through the month of June.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Belford?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. I will piggyback on Mr. Susan's recognition of the Innovation Games. I had the opportunity to be there just for the very end of the games the other day. And just want to say a huge thank you to the teachers and sponsors that made it possible for the students to come. And along with all of the amazing staff in Equity, Innovation, and Choice, I have to give a special shout out to Robin Ward, who spent the day in the pool freezing all day long. When she got out that afternoon, she looked like she was ready to fall over, but she had really stuck with it to make sure that the students had a great experience. And so thanks to, thanks to all of that team for their hard work. Also have to give a special shout out to my Madison Mohawks, who took second place in Shark Tank at the Innovation Games. So they were very excited. But one of the things that I thought was really phenomenal about this opportunity for our students is so many times when you get into strong academic clubs, or you get into, you know, niche clubs, you have a very homogeneous group of students that are participating. And one of the things that I thought was absolutely awesome was the diversity in this group. Happened to be National Women's Day, and we had an all-girls team that won first place in drone racing. Is that correct, Mr. Susan?
Yep. The secondary drone racing was all female.
Yep. And just really a wonderful amount of diversity in the group and great opportunities for all of the students that were there. They were so excited and had a great time. And so thank you, Mr. Susan, for your vision there. And certainly thank you, Stephanie Archer, and all of the Equity, Innovation, and Choice team for making that happen. And I know there were additional supports there, too. Pam was there, and Tammy was there. And so it really was kind of, kind of an all-force effort to make it come together. So thank you to all of you for doing that. One other quick thing, I had the opportunity to host a Launch to Success Tour for the Brevard Schools Foundation in the north end of the county. If you have not, as a board member, not had an opportunity to attend one of those tours, I would certainly encourage you to do so because I think they share some great information. And if you have had an opportunity to attend one of those tours, then my next encouragement would be for you to look at an opportunity to schedule one of those in your community. Because I think the more that we can spread the word about the great work the foundation's doing, we can build additional support in the community that closes those gaps for us at the district level in many instances, and certainly creates opportunities for our students. So that's it.
Ms. McDougall.
Thank you. I also want to support everybody and thank everybody for the Innovation Games. It's my first year going, and it was amazing, and it's marvelous. And thank you to all the teachers who support that. Also, I was able and attended Destination Mars, which to me was phenomenal. Again, thanks to our STEM teachers and our science teachers, and to the students' creativity. It's pretty amazing what these guys at all ages come up with. So thank you very much for that. I was lucky enough to attend the Cocoa High School, and thank you to the Cocoa High School seniors who partnered with Cambridge Elementary School for Dr. Seuss. And it's a wonderful, I think it's been going on for, I don't remember how many years. I know Ms. Sullivan would know a lot, 18 years. And it's a wonderful thing. I think Carrie Herbert is the one who, or Heber, I'm so sorry, Carrie, who organized it, and it was phenomenal. Both the little and the older all had fun, and it was very well done. So thank you very much for putting that together. It was very, it was nice to see. Again, I went to Lewis Carroll's art show last night with the arts. It's amazing the talent we have, and thank goodness for our art teachers. That's one of my passions. So thank you very much. And that's all I have right now.
Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. I'd like to actually start by expressing my sincere appreciation to this board. The commitment that you have made to supporting Endeavor Elementary School, week after week, hours at the school mentoring our kids. I thought it was just two hours a day, and finding out you spend a half a day there, and some of you are spending two days a week there. Thank you for investing in the kids at Endeavor Elementary School. And I know on behalf of Ms. Klein and the Leading and Learning Team, they appreciate it, the school appreciates it, and it's making a difference. So thank you. I also want to express my appreciation. I committed to engaging with our schools as a new superintendent, visiting schools. The practices, spend about two hours at a school, and all of you have participated with me in those visits. Spend at least an hour, one-on-one or in small groups with teachers, just giving them the opportunity to provide input, feedback on the practices that we have in place as a district, things that are going well. Don't change that, Mr. Superintendent. But also, where are the areas that we need to improve in supporting our teachers? And the input and the feedback that they have provided has been invaluable, as you know. And it becomes part of the collection of data that we review as a district in developing our priorities and our strategic plan as we move forward. We also spend at least 30 minutes walking into classrooms and visiting teachers and so on. I had the privilege of, with Ms. McDougall being at Freedom 7 a couple of weeks ago, the, I can't remember the PE teacher's name, but her integration of math principles into physical education were phenomenal. And having the chance to see kids be excited about not only running around, but also doing a math problem to get to run around was just so impressive. And then I'd also like to say a thank you to our school administrators for, it's one more thing on their plate, to coordinate the visits and provide coverage for teachers to be able to come in and meet with us and so on. So I appreciate their commitment to make those visits valuable and important in developing our priorities as a district moving forward. I also want to, Destination Mars and Innovation Games, just iconic demonstrations of Brevard Public Schools being at the center of the Space Coast. And there are a lot of shout outs were already provided. I'd like to acknowledge our sponsors who ultimately make it possible through their financial contributions as well as their participation in the event. UCF, Solar Energy Center, NASA, Northrop Grumman, Harris, Boeing, Larson Motorsports, FIT, US Air Force, Horace Mann, Aether Vision, and CodeCraft. And then as part of Destination Mars, this is the first year we did that. And I'd like to recognize our Education Technology Team, Leading and Learning, and Equity, Innovation, and Choice. They came together as cross-divisional leaders in coordinating Destination Mars. They worked with Boeing, Sharecraft, Microsoft, Piper, more business partners to make that a reality. The cost of the giant map in the middle of the room that you likely saw, $4,000 each.
How many do we have?
We had, I believe, 15 or 16, because every elementary school received one to begin practicing and preparing for the competitions, all underwritten by our business partners. On day one, the mission was where students selected and researched 6th grade science standards, and had to create a scale model of their Mars habitat, a Mars habitat inside Minecraft, the game, and then a wearable to help organisms maintain homeostasis. So the collaborative learning hands-on in this boardroom and this facility a couple of weeks ago now was just, was just amazing. And then they came back to Innovation Games and had a blind challenge, and had the opportunity to compete again. It was just so impressive. And finally, I just want to do a shout out to, I attended the Brevard County Sheriff's Office Award Ceremony Friday evening, and there were several Sheriff's Office representatives recognized. But two of our SROs were recognized that evening. One, I believe it's Corporal James Darville, the SRO at Space Coast Junior Senior High School. Every time I go to that school, and I've been there quite a few times already this year, for evening events, for school visit, and so on. Officer Darville, Corporal Darville, is engaged and involved on our campus. He is an extension of the administrative team, and he was recognized with a special award Friday evening. And also Brienne Lewis, our SRO deputy at Cape View Elementary School, met her a couple of weeks ago on our school visit and was, had a very difficult situation shared with us, with a guest on campus, and her command of the situation was just so impressive. And she was recognized as a Deputy of the Month at the award ceremony as well. So I appreciate our law enforcement representatives across our district working so diligently to keep us safer.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I just have a couple. I want to start off by giving recognition to Samantha McGill. She's the media specialist, media teacher at Sea Park Elementary School. Not only does she do an amazing program every year with Veterans Day, she also does Read Across America. And so I was able to visit Sea Park last week, and they kind of combined Read Across America Week with Dr. Seuss's birthday. And the whole staff was decked out in costumes from head to toe. Some were even unidentifiable. The Lorax was actually a friend of mine who teaches there, and I didn't even know it was her because she was completely covered. So the kids were fully engaged. I was able to read to them, and they were having a great time with their green eggs and their ham. And just what a fun experience to really engage the students in reading. Next, Junior Achievement again. I think this is probably the third, third week in a row I've given them a shout out. But they do so much. Thousands of our students they reach with, with help with financial planning and financial literacy. So more specifically, Candice Hodge and Anne Conroy-Bader. They put on the annual Junior Achievement Hall of Fame Dinner, which Mr. Susan and I attended. It was their 100-year anniversary, which was special. It was a great event. They raised a ton of money for our students building up to it. And then also that evening, just on the spot, another 25,000, I think, or something like that, which will all go towards programs for students. The hundreds of volunteers that they recruit from Northrop Grumman to go in and mentor our students, it's just, we are extremely grateful as a school district for our partnership with them. And last, I was able to, my new board assignment, which I could report out more at the end during board reports, but I attended the first graduation for AMI Kids. And I know that that organization is going to become close to my heart very quick. These are our most troubled boys, and they, they turn them around. They have a 73% success rate. And they gauge that by, the children that come to them have between 10 and 15 arrests. That's kind of one of the things that qualifies them for this program. And when they leave there, 73% of them are never arrested again. And so that is, that is the sign of a successful program. Of course, we want it 100%, but I think 73% is pretty good. So I was able to attend the graduation of six of the students. And their stories and background, as you can imagine, are heartbreaking, but they are excited and positive, looking forward to their future when they leave there. So thank you, Mr. Don Herndon, who invited me to participate in that graduation and also to serve on that board. That wraps up our board...
Ms. Duskovich, could I interrupt for one? Can I add one more to the, I just believe it's so noteworthy of a recognition. I had the privilege of speaking at the India Fest sponsored dinner, I think that was a week ago. And yes, and, and just the Indian community is so gracious and so, so hospitable. We had a wonderful evening together. The India Fest event has been going on about 20 years, and every year they raise money, and they, they give that money, all the proceeds, to community charities, totaling over the last 20 years almost $1 million. And this year, they have selected the Brevard Schools Foundation, and specifically our Take Stock in Children program. And the reality is, is their contribution is going to allow kids who are on a waiting list to receive a mentor and have the opportunity to obtain a college scholarship are coming off that waiting list, and they're going to be, they're going to be provided that opportunity. And they're also sponsoring our, our education friends up in the Panhandle who were victims to Hurricane Michael. And just their, their philanthropy and contribution to our community local and across the state is just so, so worthy of the recognition. So I thank you for letting me interrupt.
Of course. Thank you so much. It is now time to move on to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Duskovich and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 20 consent items, and one action item. You also have the Yellow Supplemental Agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public on Tuesday, March 5, 2019. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations, and item F10 on student expulsions received revisions. Items F16 on suspension of instructional employee is in addition.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
There is one person on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Can I make a quick comment, Ms. Duskovich?
Of course, Ms. Belford.
I apologize for the interruption. Wasn't really discussion on the item. I didn't want anyone to panic, and certainly not Danny, who I know is looking very much forward to his retirement. But for those of you who are not familiar with him, he has been an absolute staple in the Titusville community. He is on, I want to say, anybody know the years? 35 years, 48? Is that what you all said? 48? Yeah, from, from Dr. Sullivan in the back. He has, he has been a part of that team forever, and such a part of the community in many different capacities. And so I know that his wife retired a couple of years ago from our district, and so they will now be able to enjoy some retirement together, although depending on who you talk to, they may or may not enjoy it so much together. But, but I do think that, that they're looking forward to moving on to some other things. So thank you very much to Danny Quinn and also to his wife for all of their years of commitment to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. We are now on to the public comments. That was quick. Though School Board Policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes the portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment, the policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We have seven speakers signed up this evening. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or return. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate...
The chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. Let's begin with our first three speakers. Steven Vilgots? Mary? Mary? Say it.
Siplety.
You know that?
Marcy Siplety.
Marcy? Marcy Siplety and Melissa Selly?
Selah.
How come you guys know all these people?
They're my teachers.
Sorry, Vilgots, tried to help you out there.
Go ahead, Mr. Vilgots.
I'm Steven Vilgots, I'm a teacher from McGawley High School. I'm coming tonight to speak to you about teachers. Dr. Mullins, you started teaching in 1994. As a teacher, do you remember the hardships families face when cost of living goes up and your salary does not? Ms. Belford, board member since 2014, educational advocate in Brevard, are you advocating for teachers? Ms. Dugall, do you believe it is important, you believe it is important to ensure our professional teachers and staff are adequately supported? How are we supporting teachers? Ms. Deskovic, you state that you've been an advocate for students, parents, teachers, and our community. How are you supporting teachers? Mr. Susan, on your website, you stated, "We'll continue his dedication to taxpayers, parents, teachers, students, stakeholders in Brevard County schools, serving to the best possible education for our children." How are we supporting teachers? Ms. Campbell, from your website, you said, "For our community, to see that our tax dollars are spent wisely and not wastefully. For parents, teachers, and staff to make sure their voices count in decision-making process." All the board in one way or another states that they are for teachers, students, and are education advocates. How is this so true? Since 2013, these numbers personal for me, three thousand five hundred dollars is the total amount of raises since 2013. That's 6.74%. When I see teachers not being retained, who are passionate about teaching future generations, not because they don't want to teach, but because they cannot afford to, they seek different employments. I have many examples of teachers left for the private sector to earn more money. I've had many offers for myself to leave for the private sector. I know amongst the board, there's people who have left for the private sector. As a teacher, we have an effect on all of society. Without teachers, where would we be? Lastly, as we are, as a county, number one in student performance in many different areas, the board needs mixed teachers, number one in salary for the state of Florida. Put us in the budget every year so you can retain all your teachers. Hashtag, fund our future. Thank you.
Good evening. I am the media specialist at Jackson Middle School. On February 20th, a lockdown drill was called, and we followed practice procedures. In less than ten minutes, the drill ended successfully. The very next day, just two minutes before the lunch bell, a lockdown was announced. I didn't have a class at the time, but three students and four adults were in the library. We went to our safe place, and we waited for release. Ten minutes into the drill, we were beginning to realize this was no ordinary drill. Twenty minutes, thirty minutes, I told the students if they saw the doorknob move, not to make a sound. Forty-five minutes, I had been standing by the door, trying to hear, hoping that I didn't hear gunshots. I now had to sit down as my legs were shaking. Fifty-five minutes, no sound. Sixty minutes, I hear no voices, but I hear the door to the library open, I hear the door to the office open, and I whispered to my students, barely audible, not a sound, and they didn't make a sound. The doorknob rattled, no one made a sound, I heard a voice say, "It's locked," and then the rattle of keys. The door opened, and a Titusville officer said, "Titusville Police, is there anyone here?" I turned the lights on, there was a TPD officer in full SWAT gear and a rifle. He asked if there were students, he looked at their faces, and three terrified faces looked back at him. He said, "Leave the lights on and lock the door until we return." They did, and we continued our day, lunch, classes, even a track meet. At the end of the day, a faculty meeting was called. This was a real threat, we were informed. Students were intent on retrieving weapons and killing teachers. Because see something, say something happened, a disaster was averted. We, the teachers and students, did exactly what we were supposed to do. Our administration did exactly what they were supposed to do, and the Titusville Police Department did exactly what it was supposed to do. Yet after the incident, nothing. While we had counselors on campus the next couple of days, we did not hear a word from our superintendent or from our school board member. Yet in most of these, it was as if nothing had happened, and yet it did. Nothing on the news, nothing anywhere. All the millions that you have spent hardening the schools and hiring security people only helps if the danger is coming from the outside. Yet in most of these situations, the danger is coming from within. There are laws driving the idea of least restriction environment, but when we are providing seven or eight months of data on certain students and saying there are major problems, you need to listen. I have spent almost twenty-nine years in this county, and I have never seen the actions and behaviors in the classrooms that I am seeing today. The total lack of consequences for outrageous student behavior is appalling. We averted a tragedy through practice. We were lucky. We may not be so the next time. And by the way, Channel Nine News just told me, outside before this meeting, I was number six on the list. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Selah, and I have worked for this district for seventeen years, all of them at Jackson Middle School. Although I have disagreed with many things with the school board, the disrespectful raises and the circumventing of class size being two big items, I have never before felt the need to stand here. Then again, I have never felt my life or the lives of my students were in imminent danger until now. Let me begin by saying that the district has loudly proclaimed how they have updated security. It's true, you put up a fence that makes us sitting ducks if we ever had to flee the building in a true emergency. You made us use badges to enter the office, next to a three-foot-high counter that my 5'2" frame can easily scoot over. Yes, on paper, these improvements look good, but in truth, these measures do nothing, especially because the biggest threats have nothing to do with fencing. I question the effectiveness of a security protocol that allows students who threaten violence or act violently to be allowed to return to school. How can a student threaten to punch a teacher than be back in that student's class in less than twenty-four hours? How can I feel safe when students with felony charges, including sexual battery, use of a firearm, and assault are in my classroom? How are we serving students with excellence while ignoring their needs for services like mental health and emotionally disturbed? All of this has happened at my school this year, and we are not alone. Every school in this county will tell you that they have students that should not be there, that threatens the safety and security of everyone on campus. They are being told that these threats must stay. Track six weeks of data, and then six weeks more with zero results. We have gotten rid of zero students by tracking data this year. How is this serving students and improving security? What happens when these threats are not removed? Well, we had an incident on February 21st. That incident resulted in a sixty-minute full lockdown of our school. Sixty minutes of sitting in the dark, terrified, silently waiting for Titusville SWAT to check every room, guns drawn. They were looking for two students that had threatened to shoot up our school. They had left the school to retrieve guns. They had a plan to kill teachers. Thankfully, my administration, Titusville Police Department, teachers and students acted as trained to avoid a crisis. But was the crisis avoided? To me, the crisis started when one of those students threatened to punch me in the face in October. And despite numerous referrals and issues, he was there five months later with a plan to kill us. I was forced to welcome that student into my classroom every day for five months after what should have been an expellable offense. You are not providing us with security. You are putting the rights of a few above the safety and security of hundreds. I challenge you to review your expulsion procedures and discipline plan. Ask yourself, are you really providing enhanced security at our schools when we are being forced to let the real threats walk right through the front door? Thank you.
First, I would like to thank the board for giving me the time to speak about a few topics that I think are very important and worth talking about, so we can hopefully come up with some solutions to help our students and teachers in the future. My name is Scarlett Zimba, and I am the school counselor at Jackson Middle School. I am constantly thinking about the role mental health plays in students who have emotional and behavior disorders, and how these students have a cause and effect on the general education classroom. I have gone to at least three trainings in the last school year on mental health awareness, and I have seen positive changes since our county has trained and implemented the new suicide risk assessments. We have more students successfully seeing a counselor from our partner providers than before. My worries have now shifted to a different mental health problem. The students we serve with emotional behavior disorders, whom I believe we can also serve better. One suggestion I have is that if the school's problem-solving team, which is myself, school counselor, a school psychologist, the support specialist, if we all come to a consensus, that our professional judgment should weigh enough to get the help we are requesting without the weeks and weeks and weeks of data collection. We want and have appreciated when we get help on how to properly meet students' needs. We don't want it to boil down to a student hurting themselves or others disrupting classrooms day after day, threatening violence or engaging in significant property damage in order to get them this request, because then it's too late. These children shouldn't be left unsupported in their needs because it takes us months to get the data needed to help the students, even if we know from assessing the student's psychological, their school history, evaluations, and their demeanor in the first few weeks when the students' needs are not being met. My second suggestion is offering our teachers more supports in the classroom, such as more paraprofessionals to help with the data collection and implementation of the behavior plans, which includes teaching the replacement behaviors. If we received assistance in a more proactive timeline, we would be able to make a determination, have the proper data much quicker, which would allow these children to get the educational supports they need, and it would allow them to succeed along with their peers. Just like the new SRI procedures we created to give our county a proactive way to follow federal laws to help our students, we can do the same for these students, too. Over the last year since Stoneman Douglas, we have made many changes to our school safety plan, but I believe our biggest resource in keeping the school safest are those of us who are there every day teaching and caring for these students.
Mr. Calucci?
My name is Anthony Calucci, President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. After three months of impasse, we will return to the bargaining table tomorrow. This is a step in the right direction, and I'm hopeful that our solutions to pressing problems will be accepted. However, this isn't the way things should be. What's occurred this year during negotiations is utterly absurd. To give the public an idea of how ridiculous negotiations have been, it must be noted that this district has hired outside counsel for about forty thousand dollars to fight against teachers' solutions. Yet you still want stakeholders to believe that this is a pro-teacher school board. I can't even fathom that when there is a mass teacher shortage, you are so quick to blow off the reasonable recommendations of your teachers. A lack of planning time, substitute crisis, raging discipline issues, broken air condition, compensation, the teachers of this district thought of ways to improve these issues and brought them to the table in good faith. And let's be clear, BFT does represent the teachers of this district. If you don't think so, go ahead, hire another attorney and have them read the state statutes for you. It seems the situation we encountered at the table is we offered solutions to problems, and you offered problems to our solutions. That attitude will not advance this district. The fact that you literally stated you wanted to maintain the status quo on eight out of nine of our proposals is telling. You do understand that the status quo will ensure that the status quo continues? The Brevard Federation of Teachers believes that our students, our teachers, and our community deserve better than the status quo. We believe there must be teacher-led changes to improve our district. I've heard some of you say that you wish you could give us better raises. Wishes are for small, powerless children, not elected officials in one of the largest school districts. You can make things happen. And if you want to continue to partake in an unfair labor practice and directly deal with our members, change your question. Instead of asking them if you think BFT should take your money offer, tell them that Lake, Marion, Palm Beach, Dade, Duval, Highlands, Manatee, Collier, Okeechobee, Polk, St. John's, Orange, Fallujah, Osceola, Hardy, Union, Leon, Clay, Swann, Pinellas, Hernando, received larger raises than BPS is offering. Then ask, "Do you think you are worth less than those teachers?" Whereas you might believe that, this union doesn't.
Good evening, Vanessa Skipper, Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. To the members of the board, each of you at one point decided that you were going to run for school board. You had a why, you had a motivation. Are you fulfilling that why, and are you fulfilling that motivation? As I look into the crowd, first with the student members, who Anthony and I have both had the pleasure to speak to in their class, two of which are my former students, April and Danielle, shout out. And to my colleagues behind me, which by the way, after teaching all day, they continue to show up week after week at a school board meeting, I see familiar faces, some that show up every single one, and I'm seeing new faces every week. The idea that they have to come here to show that they believe in what BFT is doing, and they believe that they deserve what all the other districts are getting, should speak volumes. The other districts received the same amount of an FTE increase that we did. The other districts received the same formula of funding that Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act put forth. So stop using those two things as excuses for why you're not funding our raises. A few years ago, I told my dad that I was going to leave the classroom and either do this job, or I was seriously thinking about running for the District Two seat. And he said, "Well, if I had to pick one, I'd rather my daughter be a union boss." Because he said he'd rather me not be a politician who sells thing on the campaign trail and then doesn't follow through when they get on the board. I think some of you feel helpless. I do. I think some of you feel helpless. Stop feeling helpless. You are the school board member of Brevard County. Act like it. You are the checks and balances for the Brevard Public Schools. You are in place to take action. Action is more important than words. We can sit here and we can talk about data, we can talk about looking at things, but you know what? This is my thirteenth year in the district. We've been talking about data forever. It's time to do something about the data we already know. I've decided to become very familiar with the statute that talks about your roles and responsibilities. You know what? You don't know something, look at it. One of your responsibilities, even though I was told by a school board member that there was nothing they could do, they could not direct a school, there is a part of this statute that talks about visiting schools, observing the management and instruction, and giving suggestions for improvement. So do it. There is a principle out there that needs a lot of improvement. And had what happened at Jackson happen at this school, probably wouldn't be the same ending. So come on, act like elected leaders and make solid decisions. Act like elected leaders and make solid decisions.
Our last speaker is Mr. Schifrin. Did you hear that, Mr. Schifrin?
Chairperson Deskovich, Dr. Mullins, school board members. My name is Gary Schifrin, and I come to you as the executive director of the Brevard Association of School Administrators, a parent of two children who went through the Brevard School System, a husband of a retired educator with the school system, a former Brevard County Teacher of the Year when I taught at Melbourne High School, and most importantly, a concerned citizen who has an issue with the direction of public education. In my role as the executive director, I understand that our members are management. At the same time, I want to convey the message that school administrators want the very best for our teachers and support personnel. All across our nation, teachers have gone on strike because they have become so desperate in securing appropriate compensation and good working conditions. And many of these strikes have resulted in the changes needed. I understand that Florida is a no-strike state, and so providing the changes needed is so dependent on those decision-makers who can do the right thing. I attend just about all of the school board meetings. I want you to know that stories that our teachers bring to you are heartfelt, sincere, and in many cases desperate. When I sit in the room and hear what our teachers have to do to make ends meet, it is heartbreaking. One of the teachers you have heard from is a superstar teacher who I had at Merritt Island High School. She's a single mom who has a wonderful son who has had two kidney transplants. Besides the tremendous challenges she has as being a teacher, she also has the challenge of amazing medical expenses for her son. She is one of many of your teachers who face daily burdens just to survive, but she loves teaching and makes a difference in so many lives. I'm not totally blaming this school board for not providing appropriate compensation for our teachers. Many priorities could be changed, provide more resources for better pay. But rather, we must continue to get out and communicate with our legislators, both by voice and the ballot box, as to the importance of taking care of public education. Anytime we lose a teacher because they cannot provide for their family, then we have lost the gift to touch the lives of so many young people. That is not only fact that the most important person in our school system is the classroom teacher. We cannot continue to go down the road we are on, but rather need to do a U-turn and start making decisions which will not only encourage the best and brightest to enter the profession, but maybe more importantly, to retain all of these wonderful teachers who currently are in your classrooms. I know this is a great challenge for you, but there really is no other option. We must take care of our teachers and do the right thing.
The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Would any board member like to address any of the public comments this evening? Go ahead, Ms. Belford.
I would like to thank the team from Jackson for coming out this evening to speak with us. Congratulations to you all on handling a very difficult situation very well. I had the opportunity to speak with your principal and Dr. Sullivan on the day of the event, spoke with the police chief and the sheriff, who also had some input on the situation just from a peripheral standpoint over the weekend. And then, of course, Dr. Mullins and I spent Thursday, I think, with you all, getting some additional input. So I appreciate you bringing forward some suggestions for some things that we can do differently going forward. And certainly, I appreciate that the new SRI process is assisting more students in getting them additional support. And if we can tweak that to address some other things as well, I think that would be great. But I do think that you all deserve some recognition because the situation that you went through was a very difficult one. And actually, I was at your school that morning before the lockdown occurred and was having some conversations with Ms. Shockley regarding the drill that you had gone through the day before. So thankfully, you all had done that drill, you had done it seamlessly the day before. Kudos to the students, kudos to the staff and the teachers at Jackson, and certainly kudos to the assistant principals and the SRO that was there to help you through the situation. Everything that I have heard from law enforcement, from everyone, is that you all did an absolute textbook response to a really difficult situation. So thank you for that, and thank you to the rest of your team at Jackson. And we certainly look forward to having some additional discussions regarding the recommendations for the process of evaluation and providing additional supports.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Would any other board member like to address any public comments, or Dr. Mullins?
Well, I would like to echo Ms. Belford's comments about the situation at Jackson. It is unfortunate that we're in a day and an age where the types of drills that we do have become necessary. At the same time, I'm thankful that we had the foresight to put those into place, that prepared staff to respond amazingly. I believe the words that I will...I caution to quote someone, but I will do my best. Dr. Sullivan was very engaged throughout the entire incident, and I believe she referenced it, something like, "The staff of Jackson were fantastic. They handled it in a model fashion, and you'd be proud of them." So I echo that. I'd also like to extend a great appreciation to our team of support staff who went in the days following the incident to support students and staff as well through that very difficult situation, so.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Would any other board member like to make any comments? Let's move this on into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are 20 agenda items under this category.
Does any board member wish to pull any items? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Belford, second by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Deskovich, there is one item under this category this evening. Item G29 is on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. We are now on to board member reports. Does anyone have anything that they wish to add? Ms. Belford?
Just a quick one. I sent you all a legislative update on Friday. Our Legislative Committee is meeting every Friday now that session is in full swing, and so I will do my best to get those out to you as quickly as possible after the updates. Also, wanted to let you all know that I will be in Tallahassee over spring break for that entire week. So in the event that there are things that you would like for me to address specifically while I'm not there, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Any other board member have anything to report? I have a letter. I don't want to read the entire letter to you, but it is addressed to me as the chair, and it's from the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Commission. And I'm going to have...I'm going to see if Pam will scan it in, because it came in hard copy-only, and maybe email it to the entire board. To summarize, in short, they are strongly encouraging that we reconsider the full guardian program. They are saying that, it says, "Simply having one armed safe school officer on a campus is insufficient in most cases, especially when the law permits other qualified and willing school personnel to be voluntarily armed as a collateral duty to stop a threat that may occur in a school." That's just one little paragraph out of there. They took time, I'm assuming, to address one of these to every chair in the state. These are the people that have studied what happened at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas in depth, and so I believe in the future, we are going to have to take a look at this again and take the recommendation seriously. That is all I have. Dr. Mullins, do you have anything to report?
Madam Chair and members of the board, I have asked staff to come and take a few minutes and provide just a bargaining summary and update as they're coming forward. I'd like to first extend my appreciation to Mr. Calucci. He accepted our request to come back to the bargaining table. Dr. Thede reached out to him last week, and it was under the context of, so there was no misunderstanding, that we were not coming back to the table with money to offer at this time, but we did request to come back to the table to discuss some of the outstanding language that has been referenced. So we are meeting tomorrow afternoon with the union to continue the bargaining process. So I'd like Dr. Thede and Ms. Erker just to provide a summary of where things are. You've certainly been involved and engaged throughout the whole process through closed sessions, and this is where things are today and going into our conversations tomorrow. And then I'll close with just a couple comments.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Good evening, Mrs. Deskovich, board members. Mrs. Erker and I are here just to share with you the historical process for bargaining that we've had this year to date. Like Dr. Mullins said, there isn't anything contained in here that you haven't already heard in executive sessions. You can see on the slide, these are the dates that we have met with BFT to bargain, and you can see the information related to where we ended up with impasse on December 17. The language that has tentatively been agreed to through the process includes use of cellphone apps like Rave, Mutual Link with teachers, a change for 2020 to the employee hospitalization medical plan that plan design changes, lunchtime for self-contained teachers, deletion of obsolete language regarding PGP's for ROTC teachers, and then a change and update to leaves of absence for jury duty or for subpoena leave for teachers. In addition, we've also looked at, we've also tentatively agreed to an increase to the hourly rate for homebound instructors to include travel, also the criteria for being eligible to receive pay for performance for teachers who may have worked less than a complete year, time to vote in primary and general elections on those dates, and then for annual contract teachers who may serve as union officers. There's language still in question. No discussion of the language, other than to say one is about grievance procedure, one is about the advanced degree supplements, general conditions of employment to include certified school counselors and planning, professional development on early release Fridays, increasing the number of protected plannings per week where there are no meeting zones, and allowing teachers to leave early when air conditioning is not working at a school. The teacher protection article denying students who have been referred for discipline entry into the classroom if the teacher, for 60 minutes, and then having a conference with the principal if the teacher so requests within two days. Also, transferring eight hours of sick leave between non-related employees and providing a $500 payment to teachers who are eligible for sick leave buyback whether they choose to participate in sick leave buyback or not, in addition to salary being one of the items that's still on the table.
In regards to salary negotiations, BFT was the first to make an offer on August 20. Their offer included effective teachers $2,696, highly effective $3,0594, bonus $500, a supplemental adult ed. of $5,500, and a supplemental ESC. On October 17, BPS counter-offered with an effective $360, highly effective $575, bonus of $440, a supplement to the ESC of $165, and a reduction in the work week to 37 and a half hours. The costs of each of these are shown here. The BFT offer would cost $22,886,778. The BPS counteroffer, $5,689,437. BFT countered BPS's offer on November 5, maintaining everything except dropping the $500 bonus. They added instead the language that Dr. Thede spoke of, of the $500 payment if they were eligible for sick leave buyback. BPS countered offered with higher numbers, effective $540, highly effective $770, bonus excluding unsatisfactory evaluations, $1,000, and maintain the ESC supplement for $165. We withdrew the 37 and a half hour work week. The cost on these, BFT's second or counteroffer to BPS was $20,437,778. BPS up their offer to $9,933,799. To obtain that revenue, the district went out and then cut 16 reserve teaching units for a cost of $1 million recurring. We reduced operating budgets at the district office by another $700,000 recurring. We utilized remaining funds not spent on security for $1 million, nonrecurring, and we dipped into reserves in our fund balance for $2.9 million, nonrecurring. As Dr. Mullins mentioned, we do return to the bargaining table tomorrow afternoon to discuss language. If by chance a settlement can occur, we have planned out payout dates for BFT, bonuses on April 30, implement the raise May 15, with retroactive pay on May 31. It's also important to note that best and brightest payout will be on March 29.
Thank you, Ms. Erker and Dr. Thede. You know, again, I appreciate the work that was done to get to a place that we are today. I do believe we still have work to do. And I'll share what I share, you've heard at every school I've gone to, because inevitably, as we talk to teachers, they want to understand where we are with salary and why not recurring dollars and bonus dollar, a bonus and those types of things. And I agree with the union. Bonus dollars do not count towards teachers' base salary, they don't contribute to retirement, and it is not the advantageous thing to do. And we've got to work more in that way and more toward that effort. But as we looked and dug into the budget between bargaining sessions, I told staff, "We're not going to not bring one-time dollars forward and put them in the hands of our teachers because it isn't necessarily what they prefer, but it is something we can do because we do have those one-time dollars." And that's what was able to get us to the place of that increased one-time bonus. Again, I appreciate Mr. Calucci accepting our request to sit back down at the table and look at language, certainly hopeful that through those conversations that perhaps the union will get to the place that they will take the language that is agreed to tomorrow, as well as what has already been TA'd and the last financial offer to teachers to potentially be ratified. And we've committed to that payout schedule if that's the case, and we can move toward a board vote, I believe, April 23 would be required to get to the place of those dates. But certainly, that has yet to be determined. So certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins and Ms. Erker, for all the work you've been doing. I know we keep asking you to go find more money, and you keep asking Penny to go find more money, and I know it's a challenge. We appreciate the hours you guys have been putting in. Anybody else have comments?
I would just say thank you for the update. I know, you know, as we have been visiting schools, we've had lots of questions about different elements of, you know, why bonus, and when will we have a contract, and those sorts of things. So I appreciate you putting that information out there so that people can have some of those questions answered. those questions answered, and hopefully we'll have more news soon.
Does anybody have anything else that they would like to discuss? There being no further business, this meeting's adjourned.